Okay, thank you. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the state of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or on other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA ten four six at sequentia adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton packet and the Times Trenton Times on January sixth two thousand twenty-two and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board policy twenty-two thirty recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA eighteen eight thirty-eight point one. In the event the statute is amended, the law should take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions referred to high school, central administrative, to district-wide staff and to district-wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the role?
Yes, Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Michelle Talk Ponder.
Present.
That's he Baglia.
Here.
F Baron.
Present.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
Mara Franceschi.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Rob Christopher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. So now we're going to move on to the student board members' report and our final meeting with Chris.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Minutes, yes.
Sorry. I just wanted to get to the good stuff. Sorry.
No, I know.
Item D one, can I have a motion, please, for the adoption of the minutes for May twenty-fourth? Brian, second, Jean.
Great job. Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder.
Upstaying.
That's you Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Ian Durbin.
Yes.
Laura Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
You can answer.
Yeah.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we can move on to the student board member report and it's our final meeting with the student representatives Ned Erickson and Chris Shen. And we're very happy to see you and we're sad to see you go, but we hear that you have some news for us, so I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Board President Kendall, and good evening, everyone. It's really great to be here. This is Ned and I's final board meeting as student body liaisons before we graduate and the school year ends. We really just wanted to take this time to reflect a little bit on our experiences within the Princeton Public School District and also outline some things that we'd like to see continue to be worked on in the next few years. So I've been in the Princeton Public Schools for seven years and there have been so many people, teachers, coaches, building administrators that I'm incredibly grateful for and I can confidently say have changed my life. And a year ago today, Ned and I were here for our first ever board meeting, thanking every educator in this district for their work. And tonight for our last meeting, we're doing the same thing from the bottom of our hearts and on behalf of the entire student body. Then and I thank every single educator in this district, every staff member, every faculty member, every coach, every administrator. We are extremely grateful for you and we thank you for your work.
We'd also like to thank our peers for the opportunity to serve as board liaisons. It's been an incredible experience, a great learning experience. It's been interesting to see how organizations are run and all the various different perspectives, you know, that go into educating and running a school district. And it's been an honor to get to serve in this position. Before we graduate, we urge the board to continue listening to the thoughts and experiences of students and to go the extra mile and implement these changes that we push for. Transparency is important and we think that the district could use more of this. But now we wanted to take the time to introduce next year's liaisons. Andre Penn and Rohan Shvat. Chris and I have both worked personally with Andre and Rohan and we can vouch for their dedication and we're confident that they'll successfully and diligently represent their peers in the coming year. If you two want to introduce yourselves, please go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Hi, my name's Rohan Shivday and I'm current junior at PHS. Some of my interests include debate, saxophone, economics and basketball. I'm so excited to be a liaison and take part in my local government. I hope to work towards positive change and help make PHS a better community for all.
Yeah, and I'm Andre Penn and at PHS I do debate your challenge. I also sing in a cappella group and do STEM roots. And I'm really looking forward to working with the board this year to really make our community more inclusive and more healthy. And yeah, I'm just excited.
Yeah, and overall, we had three goals that we wanted to focus on and guide what we work, what we work together over the next year. So one main goal we want to attain is to be more accessible to the students at PHS. Our role as liaisons is mainly to be mediators between the board and the student body. And we want to encourage students, encourage student input and creativity in terms of making change for the school. An example of how we would achieve this would be starting a forum for students or an anonymous Google forum of some sort that allows students to tell us what they feel needs to be changed and possible suggestions that they have. And under the same theme of accessibility also include transparency with the student body. And we hope to share relevant information with the students about the change that is taking place.
Another key goal that we wanted to continue to focus on was increasing equity in our district. So this involved several areas. The first was focusing on disparities in more advanced level classes between different, different groups in communities within our school and sort of figuring out what the underlying issues are so that we can address the problems from the root and hopefully reduce the inequities in our school in that area. Also providing more and more easily accessible educational support resources for all students at PHS so that students feel supported when they're taking a challenging course load and so that they're comfortable taking whatever classes that they're interested in and also continuing to work with ELL students and focusing on their needs to ensure that they're being given the same opportunities at PHS as every other student at PHS.
Yeah, and students' mental health is another issue that we, that is very important to us. And this entails making sure that students are aware of the mental health resources that are available at our school and also involve a mental health is being straightforward in the commitment required for certain classes. We plan to gather data on homework times and levels of difficulty for various classes and publishing these to the student body. Ensure that during scheduling season, they can make smart choices based on their extracurricular activities and other commitments on what class to take. I will make sure to report back to the board on our progress in this area.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Rohan and Andre. We're so excited to have you. And Ned and Chris will miss you. We thank you for your leadership. You were good liaisons for the student body. You were respectful and you really tried to work with us to make sure that all student voices were heard. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your leadership and we wish you all the best. And we'll be back to you in a few minutes. So thank you. So moving on to the president's comments and I just want to welcome everyone to our, the last board meeting of our academic year. It's been a rough year. We know it's, it's been difficult, the third year of the pandemic. And I would be remiss to not thank every educator, every teacher, every supervisor, every administrator, every staff member for their commitment to our students and Princeton Public Schools. Our schools were kept open for most of the year and we cannot have done that without the professionalism, professionalism of our staff. So thank you. Okay, we really appreciate it. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Kim Tu officially to Princeton Public Schools. She joined the district officially on June first. She joined us from Robbinsville where she was the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. And previously there, she was the Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction K eight. And prior to that, she was a middle school teacher at West Windsor Plainsboro School District. And so we're very fortunate to have you and we wish you all the best, Kim. So, welcome. And before we move on, it has been, this will be Kathy, Dr. Kathy Foster's last meeting with us. It has been a gift to the district to have you here, Kathy. We are so grateful for your leadership and experience and calmness and just the way you jumped into everything to really try to help the district. And so thank you, we will miss you, but you can go back to retirement for now. Okay, thank you, Kathy. And now we're going to move on to the next section, which is student perspectives. And what we've tried to do this year is to take time out of our board meeting to focus on the students because it's very important that we all remember why we're all here and we're all here for the students. And so tonight we have three teachers, Mark Eastburn, Jennifer Smolin and Jackie Katz, who are the teachers for the Princeton High School Research Program. And they have brought along with them some of their senior students. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eastburn so he can share a little bit about what projects the students were working on and what legacy they leave behind here at Princeton High School.
And actually for that, I'm going to bounce it to Ms. Katz because she had the overview. She has the long, the longest view of all of us. I mean, I may be the oldest, but she definitely has been with it the longest amount of time.
Thanks, Mark. So I'm just going to give a little context for what you're going to hear from our students because the, the research program is, is pretty unique to Princeton. So if you're not familiar with it, it, it's maybe something you haven't heard of before. So it's a three-year program that started about seven years ago as an idea between myself, a supervisor and eight students. And the goal was to really give this space at PHS for students to follow their passions, whatever that may be, and really carry out from soup to nuts, a scientific research project. Read the literature required, order the supplies required, do the setup, analyze the data. And that could fall into the rail, the realm of, you know, life sciences, physical sciences, engineering, political sciences, social sciences. So we have seen a lot in our seven years of existence and typically students come in as sophomores, start learning the process of research. And then as a junior and a senior, they're on their way. They're designing their own protocols, they're setting up their own timelines and they're communicating with myself, Mr. Eastburn and Miss Smolin, as well as mentors in the field to really facilitate their work. And it really speaks to the passions that our students have. The determination, the, the ability to problem solve. And we all kind of had a chance, many of us, I think, on this meeting to see that come to fruition yesterday. And it's just always such a beautiful occasion for me to, to think about the eight students I had seven years back. And now I have two fabulous collaborators on the program and I don't know, I can't even count them anymore. Lots and lots of students involved. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen Smolin to talk a little bit about how we're growing and changing as a program.
Yeah, so we have really grown a lot over the past couple of years. I think we're up almost over a hundred students for next year, which is very exciting for us. We have expanded rapidly and a lot of credit definitely goes out to our supervisor, Marjala Bajaj. She has been instrumental in our expansion and our success as a program. But one important component of the program is for students to present their work at various competitions and symposia. We try to emphasize to them the importance of communicating research effectively to a wide variety of audiences. So every year, at the end of the year in June, we hold our annual research program symposium at the high school, which was yesterday, yesterday afternoon. We had the pleasure of hearing from our students at this event. So our year two and three students, who are juniors and seniors, each presented a poster displaying their work. We had other students in attendance, faculty, administrators, members of the Board of Ed attended as well. Thank you to all who came. We also had the opportunity to recognize our seniors who are leaving us after three years in the program. We spent a little time acknowledging them and their projects and we wanted to bring some of them here this evening to speak to you all and talk a little bit about the work that they do. So I will let Mark introduce them and then we can hear a bit from them about their projects.
Thank you. I will kind of introduce students as they got back to us when we sent out an email this morning and then follow-ups. So I believe Ada was the first to get back. She must be an early riser because I think one student admitted they had, they'd slept till twelve thirty. Ada was in the morning still, I know that. So Ada, if you'd like to say something.
Hi, yeah, so I'm a year three, meaning I'm a senior at Princeton High School. And I'm going to be attending Princeton University next year. So as part of the research program, I conducted research in C elegans, which are a model organism. They're microscopic worms and I use these worms to study Alzheimer's disease. So specifically, based on research that I had previously read in the field, I'd seen that there is a correlation between high levels of trace metals such as copper and zinc within protein amyloid beta aggregations. And these amyloid beta aggregations are the primary biomarkers or the main characteristic of Alzheimer's disease. So in my research, I was looking at what potential molecular mechanisms might cause this relationship exist, to exist. Because I had not seen any indications of that in research as I was reading in my first year. Because that was like the main goal of the first year, to get familiar with research and form our procedure. And then in year two, which was my junior year, I began doing the process of collecting data and getting money for my research and all that. And overall, I produced some significant results. I found that in Alzheimer's disease, a model for Alzheimer's disease, these worms that produce these amyloid beta aggregations, that an imbalance in a given trace metal causes further trace metal imbalances. Now, this was interesting because when we looked, when I looked at normal worms that did not express these amyloid beta aggregations, we, I saw that a imbalance in a given trace metal ultimately triggers a return to homeostasis or equilibrium, so the normal levels. And so that might indicate that the inability to return to equilibrium for these trace metals is part of the cause of higher amyloid beta aggregations. And so this was a really key molecular mechanism. And due to my findings, I ended up writing a research report and I was published in Frontiers in Neuroscience, which is a international publication and the most cited in neuroscience. And beyond that, I've also been a Regeneron scholar, which is top three hundred nationally, internationally, actually, out of a few thousand. And I've also won some awards at the Mercer County Fair. So, long story short, I've had a really wonderful experience in this program. And I want to thank my teachers, Ms. Mullin, Ms. Katz and Mr. Eastburn, who have been excellent advisors and have given me the support that I need. And I'm also very thankful for the funding for this program, which I hope can continue to be, you know, well-funded to help make other students able to like find their passion like I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I, oh, my mic is still on. Sorry, I apologize for the pings. Couple of students wanted to double check on some when they're going, in the order that they're going. I will let Davida speak next. She was the second to respond. And is your mic working?
Yeah, I think, is it working?
Yes.
So hi, I'm Davida and I'm a current junior in the research program, so I'm in my second year. This year has mostly just been a lot about collecting data. But of course, like with any research project, both in this program or in general, there are going to be a lot of setbacks and challenges. So for example, my project is about using tobacco hornworms as a model for burn injury and healing in humans. And our tobacco hornworms, which obviously, you know, the organism I was testing on and that's necessary for my project, kept dying in the process of us trying to breed them. And another time is when I realized at the start of my project during pre-trials, I'd originally planned on testing on silkworms, that silkworms weren't going to be the best organism to test on. And so my entire project, including like the giant grant proposal I'd written, had to shift just due to circumstances, you know, I couldn't control or couldn't have predicted. However, one of them, the amazing things about this research program at PHS is I've never felt as though any one task or challenge was too monumental and that like I might have to stop this project or I might have to give up. So when the tobacco hornworms kept dying, Mr. Eastburn, my classmates and I worked around it. We kept like trying different things and yes, maybe at the expense of some hornworms, but it was all for the end goal and getting a routine down, making sure that they were successfully breeding and that we could successfully continue going about my project. When my project had to shift at the start of data collection, Mr. Eastburn, Ms. Mullin and Ms. Katz helped gather papers and resources so that I knew what I was doing and I could start the year off with a plan and I was caught up. And yeah, so yeah, there were setbacks because there always are. However, with the community that the research program has, we were able to overcome them and I was able to learn a lot about the scientific process and perseverance during this. And because we had pushed through, I now have a solid starting data showing how, one, honey prevents infection after burn injury and also that cold harm might cause cancer in hornworms and possibly humans. The cancer part, I'm planning on studying during my senior year, my third year. We've already planned out some genome sequencing things and possibly doing biopsy. However, just with the burn injury and infection data that I have so far, the project got me third in the biomedical sciences division at JSHS, which is a science fair that was run by Rutgers. I was chosen to be one of the ten poster finalists and I was also chosen to give like a little three-minute thesis. I was one of only two people to give a little like three-minute thesis presentation. So all in all, basically, the research program is truly a fabulous program that has taught me skills and continues to teach us, teach me skills every single day that I know will help me so much in life. And additionally, the community that we have built and the teachers have created is just truly fantastic.
And if I can, yeah, if I can add, if you've ever heard of a barn raising, which Amish communities do, we kind of had a, a net tent raising where we have this enormous eight by eight by eight location where the hornworm moths are going to be breeding and we'll actually get some black soldier flies in there as well. Next on my list was Catherine Monroe, who is, again, I mean, all of these students, some of these pings are actually Ms. Katz, Ms. Mullin and I saying how proud we are of all these presentations and how well you've done. So I apologize if you're hearing more pings, but it's all good. Catherine.
Okay, yeah. Hi, my name is Catherine and I'm a junior in the research program at PHS. I just wanted to speak in support of the program and talk a little bit about the valuable opportunities that it has afforded me along with a diverse group of genuinely hardworking, smart and kind people. Research is unlike any other class because it forces you to think outside the box and tackle problems in a hands-on way that I think has prepared me better for real life and real science than anything else. For example, my project has involved growing Wisconsin fast plants and sunflowers, which means being willing to get my hands dirty, drilling drainage holes, setting up watering systems and even assembling a greenhouse. It also comes with its own unique challenges. I've had to design an unconventional lighting system to grow plants and try to find a solution when my plant started growing mold. And yes, these obstacles can be frustrating, but dealing with them has been infinitely more valuable than any other experience I've had in other classes. Right now, a group of students and I are working on setting up a greenhouse in one of the courtyards that will hopefully be used to create a sustainable aquaponic system, which will be a space-effective and environmentally friendly way to grow plants. This is partially funded by a grant that Mr. Eastburn and I received from an organization called Green Matters. Mr. Eastburn has made a great effort to make the program inclusive to all students. And I know that the research program is only growing in size and we want to get even more English language learners and Spanish-speaking students involved in this project. One of the things that I admire most about the program is its commitment to inclusivity and its ability to open doors for students who may not have the connections or resources to carry out research on their own. Mr. Eastburn, Ms. Katz and Ms. Mullin are the hardest working people that I know and I'm so grateful for all the passion, support and dedication that they've poured into the program.
Thank you. I'd also like to point out Catherine did enter into the World Food Prize conducting her own other research paper on top of everything else and was recognized as a Borlaug Scholar, which gets her connected to some awesome internships that I'm hoping she'll be able to fulfill. And so the next person, oh, I just lost my list. I don't know how that happened. Ida, I'm sorry. Are you, Ida had frantically rushed home from her brother's soccer game, I think. And she was one that I absolutely wanted to speak because we have had some crazy, interesting and fun experiences with her project.
Hi, I am Ida. I'm a current junior here. I'm also speaking on behalf of my research partner, June Fallasquas, who wasn't able to make it today. We're studying the rate and significance of microevolution in invasive species and particularly the Italian wall lizard, which was brought from Italy around the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies and have scattered around the east and west coast. My partner and I have traveled alongside Mr. Eastburn to Boston and Long Island to catch them, as well as here in Princeton by Riverside Elementary School. We were, we were able to work with Professor Colin Donahue from Brown University and, and Dr. Anthony Geneva from Rutgers University in hopes of finding data and just seeing what, how far we could go with our project. And what I'm getting at here is that the research program has created an experience where its students get to make connections away from the school just because of obstacles and successes. Two years ago, I had no idea what I wanted to do. I was just answering questions in my bio class and showing interest in Mr. Eastburn's reptiles because I thought it was just fun. And then Mr. Eastburn took that into account and noticed that I had a bright future with that. I had no idea there was even like, there was even a class that I could take that was like so like that, that paid attention to something that I actually wanted to do in life. And it has done nothing but bring like more greatness to like my courses study and shown that like, like I could go farther in college with this, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, and it's, it's been quite an adventure, but just the motivation and the passion that these students had. Ida, when she was in biology, my biology class in ninth grade, she was kind of thinking about being a surgeon. And then when I followed up with her in tenth grade, she said, that's before I found out about reptiles. And I think we've continued to have quite a lot of fun adventures looking for lizards everywhere we happen, they happen to show up. Next on my list is Michael.
Hey, I'm Michael Dijo Okina. I'm a second year junior at the Princeton High School Research Program. And I want to talk a little bit about my experiences with the program. I've never been that much of an academic student, I guess. It's always been kind of hard for me to focus on things, especially things I'm not interested in. And ever since I was, even in middle school, I had this really big passion for the way people think. I've always wanted to pick people apart, analyze them. And I didn't know that psychology was a thing then. It was much more commonly heard of now, but back then I had no idea. And I remember vividly in ninth grade, I was in a lab group in my science class, my biology science class taught by Mr. Eastburn. And I remember I was with a group of people who, and I'm going to be completely honest here, didn't have a full grasp of the scientific method, at least in comparison to me. And I mean, no insult to these people, they're lovely people, but I remember I went up to Mr. Eastburn and I said, can I do an experiment on my own? And I remember, I remember that he was so overjoyed about it as opposed to what I expected, which was no work with your lab partners. And I was very excited and I put everything together and I wanted to figure out whether beetles would be attracted to or repelled by music when, when played inside of an environment. I don't think they were affected at all. There's a bunch of different reasons why that might not have worked, but it, it was one of those moments where setting up an experiment got me really interested in doing it more. And I remember Mr. Eastburn, I think that same week that I finished the experiment, told me about the research program and told me how much he would be, you would love it if I was in the research program. And ever since then, I was like, I've never been that much of a like phone guy. I don't really use social media, any of that. But I was checking my phone every two seconds to check my email, see, did I get in, did I get in, did I get in? And I'm very, very happy to say that I did get in. I'm sort of here also on the behalf of one of my research partners, Eli, who unfortunately can't be here due to physical and mental health. But our project and my other partner Jonathan LePointe, our project is on stress in adolescents, specifically stress from procrastination and over workload. And it's something that I think me and Mr. Eastburn sort of feel a shared passion for in some regards. And it, it's something that was very exciting to me. And this project helped me make a bunch of these connections that I, I didn't know I would make at all. Both with professors, like college-level professors who I've emailed back and forth with, who give me advice on how the project could go or my, even my old middle school teachers who I had to enlist in order to help make this project possible. And I've never had the best grades, I've never had the best general academic experience, but this is, at least for me, given me something to prove my intellectual worth, to show that when I'm passionate about something and when I really, really care and I'm genuinely interested, I can be, I can be really good at something. And that is an opportunity that only the research program really has been able to provide to me. And I'm more grateful than I can really even express in words. And I'm more grateful than I can really even express in words to all my teachers, Mr. Eastburn, Ms. Smolin and Ms. Katz. And this program, I just wanted to express how much this program means to me uh, just as a person, even past my experiment. So again, I'd like to thank everyone, part of the research program, even my fellow community who have helped me through things that uh, yeah, thank you.
And I still remember when I gave Michael the good news that he was in the program.
Oh, my God, I was jumping for joy.
He nearly exploded. Yeah. Um, so I'm trying to work to get someone connected right now. Um, but um, in the meantime, Nan um, and oh, and Nicholas, but he says Mark Eastburn, that's interesting.
The link was weird, I think.
Yes, Nicholas, that's Nicholas Osterman. He's another one of our seniors. Um, good to see your face there because I would have got very confused why my name was there twice. Um, I don't know if you'd like to speak?
Of course. Um, so I, I guess kind of an introduction, I'm a senior uh for my project. I was designing a simplified EG system that's electron cephalograms, which uses brainwaves and uses them to make inferences about a person's neural state. So what they're doing, what they're thinking. And so the steps of that is I, so I, I take a commercial machine, costs tens of thousands of dollars, takes up a bunch of space. And I try to condense it into something that's cheap, that's functional, um, that's portable, that's, it's kind of more practical for use. So that, that means I need to design filter PCBs, I need to research filter architectures, topology is PCB design, um, how to read these voltages, um, how to pass them into a computer, and then ultimately how to train a neural network to identify these values and extract meaningful information. And I think the thing that brought the most about the research program to me, um, it's to think of one of Mr. Eastburn's favorite analogies is comparing people to Jedi and the, the passing on of knowledge. Um, so my friend Mark Ogada, um, he's, I don't know if he's here today, uh, but Mr. Eastburn yesterday um made the analogy that he wanted uh, Mark in the program, uh, despite being already a senior by the time Mr. Eastburn invited him because he had so much knowledge to share and that he wanted to just rush and get all of that knowledge um, to another student as fast as possible to kind of continue on. And I think that, that's such a perfect microcosm of the research program as a whole, the kind of give and take of knowledge in a way that is completely, with all due respect, completely unparalleled to every single other class that I've experienced because it's such a completely different experience. Um, there's things that I've learned through research that I, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have learned in, in university because there's just so much specific knowledge that's required and all these, all, all, all these other classes, they, they help um to get a good foundation. But what they don't provide is the solid scientific foundation for knowing exactly what you need and how to use it to perfection. So I, I have here with me PCBs, printed circuit boards. Um, there's no class at PHS that teaches how to design PCB, how to set up the schematics, how the electrical filters work. Um, this is all things that in this grand kind of community of knowledge, of sharing, that the research program embodies. Like Mark uh taught me how to make a PCB and there, the, the, my, my classmate Will um sat next to me, he, he, he talked, he kind of talked to me how through, how to optimize my neural networks to get up to the highest, the highest accuracies. It's just something that it's, it's kind of a step away from a conventional learning structure into something that is just completely unparalleled in its effectiveness. Um, in conveying this knowledge that we need, that's kind of inspirational. Because it, as pretty much everyone has said before me, so at the risk of um being kind of redundant here, it allows people to pursue their interests, um, to learn exactly what sparks their passion, what motivates them to learn the most, to do the most, to become the most effective researcher that they can be. And I think that's, I think that's the most valuable experience that high school can provide us. I don't think it's um, five on an AP or an acceptance into a good university because that's nothing before passion because wha- what are we without passion, right? Um, and I think the research program is kind of perfection in a way in providing that. So thank you very much to Mr. Eastburn, Ms. Katz and Ms. Smolin for, for making it possible, for kind of letting us all um, share our, our knowledge in so many different fields with each other, for being mentors and mentees at the same time. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Nicholas. I'm glad you, I saw you and I I'm glad you're, you're taking my name as well. Um, so, oh, okay. Um, I just saw, so Mr. Bolden, um, so she can dial into that number and should be able to connect.
Yeah, you want me to try to text her?
Uh, yes, if you could, that'd be great. Um, so I, I was gonna have uh Nan speak last and rest, wrap everything up, but are you okay possibly going right before Daniela?
Yeah, for sure.
I can always count on Nan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ngung La. I am a junior and a year two in the research program, and I was absolutely delighted to see most of you yesterday at our symposium. So just to start off, one of the biggest misconceptions that I had when I first walked into the program was thinking that research is purely for the basic sciences. But here I am today to proudly present two research projects on mental health where I would identify risk and socioeconomic factors for frequent mental distress. They're analyzing over three hundred and eighty thousand adults in the US. As such, I have also luckily presented at two international societies. From there, I've also gotten the opportunity to tackle sustainability through entrepreneurship, starting with a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which you all have heard of by now, through the Samsung sulfur tomorrow. I'm also hoping to expand that into a larger scale program. It's a bonus that I have also gotten to feel my love for gardening with my peers like Catherine. So I have always really loved the fact that research is a place where I can beat myself. But the truth is, research is not just for the professional science societies. It's for applying to better our communities. Being a part of this program has allowed me to creatively think about what are the questions that have yet to be answered? Quite frankly, there are infinite questions that exist. And the truth is, this imagination and in innovation is innate in every individual. It's only through providing the spaces to discover what we're passionate about that makes us an exceptional community. Beyond all of this, we also gain the skills that go beyond solely learning the material to conduct the research. We encounter obstacles, we try, sometimes we fail, but we dust ourselves off and try again. More importantly, we learn to humble ourselves through the realization that we need each other to create innovative solutions. Here in the research program, we strive to be a welcoming community and a unique group that combines the most diverse, yet specific interests all into one space. We embrace the unknown and face it head on with an open mind. I've been in seven schools. There is no other school that has had something like this. As I conclude my time in the district this year, I am lucky and grateful for the opportunities and the support that the research program, the teachers and the students alike have granted me in the years that I have been here. I hope to see the program expand as a place for students to explore and take on the topics that are most meaningful to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And uh, Mr. Bolden, I, I sent another message. We, she's still trying to connect, but I'm not sure how we.
This is a student, Mr. Eastburn?
Correct. I had one more student who was um, we were hoping would be able to speak.
Okay. We'll just have you, uh, I have Daniela, so you should be able to hear. I'll turn up the volume.
Okay.
We'll have Daniela, Mr. Eastburn and everyone's here from uh.
Uh, Daniela, uh, you want to speak English or do you want me to translate from Spanish?
Please, I, I, I want to speak Spanish.
Okay.
Okay. So, ya puedo empezar?
Si, yes, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. Hola, mi nombre es Daniela y soy estudiante del programa de research. Uh, llevo un año en la clase, de hecho es mi clase favorita, ya que durante este año he aprendido muchísimo en esta clase sobre lo que me gustaría estudiar en futuro, que en caso es biología marina.
Okay, un momento. Hold on, hold on. Tengo que traducirlo. So Danielle's been with this program a year. Um, again, she really impressed me. Um, and so I invited her to join the program. Um, and she has said that it's her favorite class and it gives her the chance to really explore something which she's very interested in, which is marine biology. Okay, gracias, Daniela. Puede seguir.
Okay. Eh, en esta clase nosotros eh llevamos el control de lo que queremos aprender. Uh, de hecho yo tengo dos proyectos, uno es con peces beta y otro con otro pez llamado fisher.
Okay. Un momento, por favor. Okay.
Okay.
See, um, so she said, I mean, what she likes is that she gets to pursue an interest that she um, can kind of create on her own. So she's doing two projects right now. One is on beta fish, the fighting fish that we all know. And the other is in a bicer, which is a landwalking, air-breathing fish. They do exist, believe it or not. Okay, Daniela, puede seguir.
También tengo, con los peces beta básicamente lo que quiero probar es el comportamiento y también quiero probar un producto uh derivado de unas plantas que podría hacer cambiar el sexo de los peces, beta hembra a machos.
Debe traducir eso. So she, one of her things is a um, it's a very common industrial chemical that um we're seeing if it, or well, she's saying if it um has an effect on the behavior of beta fish, um, because it does, it has been shown to convert even at extremely low levels that are considered safe for human health, uh, has been shown to convert male animals into females. Um, so she's going to see, this has never been done with beta fish before. She's going to see if we can take the very flashy, showy male and turn it into kind of a drab uh, plain looking female because fish are kind of that way. Okay, y la otra, Daniela?
El otro es con los peces fisher, que básicamente lo que estamos viendo es la evolución desde el principio.
Okay, so she's with the bicer, which is this air-breathing land-dwelling fish. Um, we're trying to, or she's trying to kind of replicate um evolution um, in a very short timeframe. So one genetic mutation, see what kind of an effect that would have. Puede seguir.
Okay. Eh, nosotros nos basamos en varios artículos lanzados en una de las revistas más importantes de ciencia, pero nos dimos cuenta que una de estas revistas no se dio cuenta que hay un pez eh que tiene una sola mutación genética diferente a los que les investigaron y estos peces caminan mejor que las investigaciones que ya habían realizado.
See, so this, um, I think Ms. Katz, Ms. Smolin and I all have high ambitions for our students. Um, this particular fish has been published a couple of times in Nature, which is the, the big name journal, if you want to get published in. And what Danielle is pointing out is that we have this other fish that's shown up in the pet trade, which has a shorter body because of one genetic mutation that seems to walk even better than the ones that have been published in Nature so far. Um, so that's what she has been studying. And actually, she's, so I keep translating, we, she's actually leading a couple of other students um through this project who are just um, really, they're not officially even part of the research program. They're just really enthusiastic about fish and walking fish. So she's actually been mentoring them as well. Si, tienes más que quieres decir, Daniela?
Uh, básicamente que este proyecto simplemente que es muy bueno el programa de research y que a mí a muchos de los estudiantes nos emocionó mucho aprender sobre lo que sea que queramos aprender relacionado con la ciencia.
Okay, bueno, muchísimas gracias. Debes de ser muy gracioso de, de, de poder hablar adelante de todos. Um, so she was saying, okay, yeah, so she was saying that this was like, this is a unique opportunity for everyone to explore their own interests. And um, you know, I think uh everyone in this group is going to go far and I just couldn't be proud of, of, of all of them. And I'm very grateful, I mean, thankful also that you allowed us all to speak, but this is a great cohort of students and um, I think Ms. Katz and Ms. Smolin and I would agree about that. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add at the end.
Uh, thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too.
You too, Daniela.
Um, so Ms.
Thank you, Daniela.
Mr. Eastburn, Ms. Smolin, Ms. Katz, we wanted to thank you for coming. Um, and thank you to all the students for, you know, coming on short notice and sharing your projects and your passion with us. Um, I think what Nicholas said really um struck me. It's really, we do want every student to have this kind of learning opportunity, right? It's probably based learning and it's something, you know, the board supports. And as Ms. Katz said, the program's grown from seven, I think when Betsy and I joined the board six years ago to a hundred now, and I hope in another seven years, it's more than two, more than doubles. So um, thank you, Mr. Eastburn, Ms. Katz, Ms. Smolin for your leadership. Um, I don't know if there's anything you want to say.
Um, if I could add, I, I think she is on the Zoom. Um, just tremendous thanks to, to Madula Bajaj for everything. Um, the only reason that it was able to expand was because of her leadership. Um, you know, when we had forty applicants or forty-four applicants, I guess, last year, she made sure that every single student got in. Um, this year with a hundred and seventeen applicants, um, she certainly wanted to get all of them in again, but just constraints of, you know, unless, unless one of our students figures out how to clone people. Um, I think Ms. Katz, Ms. Smolin and I are a great team. Uh, maybe a couple of our clones would do an equal job, one would hope. So um, you know, she has been a tremendous advocate for getting um, as many students as possible in the program. And um, I, I told her at the beginning of this year, actually, maybe last year, we were just getting started. And um, I still feel like that, but I really, it, my, my heart is bleeding that Madula is um leaving and, and we're just very, very grateful for the, all that she has contributed to this program.
Thank you. And uh, we do wish Madula the best of luck in her new position. Um, and we, we look forward to more great things from the science program. So thank you again for coming. Um, and you're welcome to stay as we move on. Um, and the next part of our board presence report is the recognition of and tribute to departing student board members. And so I will turn it over to Brian McDonald and Beth Barron to manage this part of the program.
Okay, I think I'm gonna go first. And I get to recognize Chris with the resolution, official resolution. Here it is. Whereas Chris Chen is leaving the Board of Education due to graduation. And whereas Chris Chen has fulfilled a year of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Chris Chen has made to the district and its students. Thank him for his time and effort and wish him much success in his future endeavors. Chris, thank you so much for everything that you have done and we wish you all the best as you go forward.
And I'll move on and talk about Ned, um, and then we'll clap for both of you. Ned, whereas Ned Erickson is leaving the Board of Education due to graduation. And whereas Ned Erickson has fulfilled a year of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Ned Erickson has made to the district and its students. Thank him for his time and effort and wish him much, much success in her future endeavors. So Ned, um, thank you for, for being part of our, our meetings this year and for bringing the voices of the students to us. And uh, we're grateful for your participation. And I just have to say that having known you since you were born, it was a real pleasure having you here on the board with us and seeing how much you're doing for your community and, and I wish you both, Chris and, and Ned, the best in your future endeavors. Thank you both.
Okay, and I just have a one more item before I turn it over to the superintendent and um, that has to do with um the math report. And I just wanted, uh, the last meeting, uh, it was brought to our attention that um the math report from the consultant that was done, I think in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, had been um redacted and that was just a mistake. Uh, and we said we would look into it. And so that math report will be posted, uh, if it hasn't been already, on the district website, uh, in a if it hasn't been already on the district website in its complete form. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kelly for the superintendent's report.
Thank you for President Kendall and once again, Chris and Ned, thank you for your service and we are going to miss you. So please stay in touch. And to our scientists and researchers, thank you so much for your report. So I am excited this evening to introduce to the board and the community presentation regarding a potential system of, of support on the side of our MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support on the side of behavior or for mental health. So without further ado, the, the individuals who are here this evening from the Effective School Solutions or ESS, as they are well known, will be presenting to the board and the community a report. I'm sorry, a presentation that they have shared with a few of our administrators. As you know, we want to make sure that for all of our students that when they come to school, that they have the appropriate supports that they can attend fully to the academic experiences, the learning experiences that are happening in their classrooms. And with the leadership of our Director of School Counseling and also the leadership of our Special Services Department, we are would like the, the board to consider this approach. So Dana, would you like to introduce our guest speakers?
Yes, hi. We are very pleased to have Jared Delancey with us this evening from Effective School Solutions and I believe Jared, you're here by yourself this evening.
All by myself.
All by yourself. So Jared, the floor is yours. And I believe that you allowed him to share a screen.
Not yet.
Okay.
Right now.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, you're good to go, Jared. All right, thank you, Matthew, and thanks for the introduction, Dr. Kelly and Dana, and thank you for your time. I do want to say quickly that I thought I had entered the wrong Zoom meeting. I thought it was a Princeton University meeting, hearing your students talk. I'm so impressed. And, you know, I went to the University of Pennsylvania and Princeton was a big rival. So I started feeling, yeah, I see, stuck bonder. At any rate, very impressive and I wish you all very well as you go forward. So let me share my screen. What, what I'm looking to do here is to give the Board of Education a good feel for what Effective School Solutions can potentially bring to the district. I commend the district for looking to expand and bolster its mental health supports for students. And I really appreciate the time and opportunity you're giving me to talk specifically about what we can do at ESS. I do have a presentation for you. I will for sure, let me just get that out of the way, be mindful of your time. I know these meetings can go very late. I'm going to make it succinct and be happy to stay as long as you need me to answer questions. I'll, I'll take my cues from you, Dr. Kelly and from you, Ms. Kendall about that. Can everyone see just a thumb up, thumbs up with that title page? Okay, good. Just to frame this discussion, I want to be clear, ESS is thirteen years old. We've been seeing an uptick in the incidence and severity of mental health challenges well before this pandemic era. The pandemic has obviously exacerbated these challenges amongst our students and their families, but it was already happening prior. What we've seen since in the past couple of years, the imposition of this dilemma on our country and the rest of the world is an increase in the frequency and intensity of those challenges even further. So more depression, more anxiety, also deeper depression, more severe anxiety, more acting out behaviors, more suicidal ideation, et cetera. And I'm sure you've seen that not only in your home district, but with your neighbors and other districts, other counties throughout the state. We're now in ten states throughout the country all the way out to California. And that's precisely what we've been seeing with all of our partner districts who number about a hundred and ten at this point. The other piece of this, which makes it doubly troubling is the access to care being decreased. So maybe even if you look at that first bullet point with decreased access to care, fifty-nine percent of youth with major depression did not receive health treatment. So we want to at ESS, address both concerns. The increased numbers, the increased severity on the one hand, and also access to care. We've got these students in the school building. Hopefully not wood, no more school closures and we'll continue to have them every day. It's an opportunity for us to address their needs. Straightforward talk about this model, schools were not built to provide the level of clinical care that we're seeing that our students need. And so this is an attempt, and we've been doing it for, for thirteen years now, to bridge that gap between the psychiatric world, the mental health world and its supports and the school world. We have this opportunity of having the students with us. And I'm going to show you how we do that. ESS frequently does thought leadership pieces, does research. I'm going to talk to you more about the data that we collect. And in our conversations, not only with our own clinicians in these ten states and a hundred and ten districts, but with our partner districts as well, clinic, uh, uh, district leadership, school leadership. We ask, what are the challenges that you're seeing? And we write reports. This mid-year, this past year, we asked that for the first half of the year and came up with this article. And we saw just as we, as we've been discussing, this increase in mental health challenges, increase in aggressive behavior, we're often hearing, but also teacher and staff burnout. Already a really difficult job. I myself was a middle school teacher in the South Bronx. It was one of the greatest things I've ever done, but also one of the hardest things I've ever done. And I needed more support while I was there to work with the students in my classroom who had emotional and behavioral challenges. And I'm also going to talk to you about how we propose to do that with your staff. This is how we conceive of our multi-tiered system of support. Dr. Kelly was talking about an MTSS approach. We're looking to fit seamlessly into not only the supports that you currently have in place for students with mental health challenges, but your academic MTSS. Students at the top of this pyramid, and this is why it was modeled after your INRS, a response to intervention, multi-tiered system of support, academic model. Students at the tip of that pyramid have the highest level of need. And ESS provides programs for those students, but what we're really looking to focus on in Princeton is tier two. And that's for students with mild to moderate needs, who we're seeing in greater and greater numbers, particularly in the past two years, who we want to intervene with earlier, proactively, so they don't escalate to tier three. I'm going to give you a snapshot of what that tier looks like, what we're proposing for Princeton Public Schools. But I also want to be clear that regardless of the tier level of programs, we're in many districts at tier three and Mercer County, for example, or in Robbinsville, and I, I believe Dr. Two, am I pronouncing that correctly? Was formerly in, in Robbinsville.
Yes, I remember you, Jared. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Thank you. And familiar with ESS there doing tier three work, Hamilton, doing tier three work, but also tier two, covering all of their schools in one way or another, and I'll tell you what I mean by that. And they've got lots of schools, if you're familiar with Hamilton. So regardless though, tier three or tier two, we want to do tier one. And our approach to doing that is professional development, standard with any clinical model for the entire district. Not just the schools we're in clinically. We want to have all of your students impacted, not just the students enrolled in ESS, and we do that through their teachers. And I was so pleased as a former teacher and, and then as a clinician to know that ESS had this approach, to not only do direct service with students and families, but to work with teachers, creating trauma attuned classrooms, working with students who are not the squeaky wheels, who are harder to identify, working with students with executive functioning deficits, working with high performing students whose anxiety is through the roof. All of these topics numbering about fifty at this point are in our professional development library, which we've shared with the district and you would be choosing from those topics for any of the schools that you'd like us to focus on or any subgroup. If it's not teachers, perhaps it's nurses or teachers aides or paraprofessionals. So we want to do that as well and I'll talk about that. The foundational support is of course the strategizing that we've done directly with the district in the past, but also through this response to the RFP that was issued. As I go through these next couple of slides, I want to focus on sharing with you the important essential factors in the clinical program itself. Want to be clear that I knocked it earlier, so we're all covered, but if we do have school closures and we are working with Princeton Public Schools, we, as you might imagine, have created a set of best practices over these past two years for delivering these mental health services virtually. And we'll be ready to pivot to that if we're working together and we do have further closures. I want to give you a little bit more about the clinical team. Where do we find these clinicians? Top rate clinicians, highly qualified, always licensed. And then how do we give them more support through a supervisory structure? That's not only programmatic, but clinical. This is not a function of dropping some clinicians off in your schools and leaving them to their own devices. And I'll explain what I mean by that. I'll give you a little bit more about professional development and then just this final piece, I think as important as the other three. Our goal is to be collaborative with the district, collaborative with the strong supports you already have in place and those folks who are implementing those supports. So child study teams, school social workers, school psychologists, guidance counselors. We know how they're invested in supporting students currently. We want to take advantage of that passion and that understanding of student backgrounds and be collaborative. We don't want to be a satellite program in the corner of the building doing our own thing and I'll tell you how we do that. Okay, this is a snapshot of tier two. It's quite involved. I just wanted to give you the basics so that we're all on the same page and you have a good feel for our approach. Our focus here, again, students with more mild to moderate needs, maybe they're just starting to struggle. They're keeping it together for the most part, but maybe just starting to pop up on your radar with depression and some anxiety, some school avoidance, some behaviors. We want to intervene early. We have a caseload of up to fifteen students for every clinician. We've proposed two clinicians for Princeton Public Schools. That can cover two schools or we can divide those clinicians up two schools per clinician, covering four schools. We can talk about those details. Hopefully there'll be an opportunity to explore that further, but we proposed two clinicians, each with a caseload of fifteen. And those students would be in the program roughly six to eight weeks. So it'd be a far wider reach in terms of the number of students that we support because we're always looking to provide the effective support and then step students down, transition them out of ESS and back into your current MTSS system. Or one that we collaborate with you on to make it even more effective. So that's our goal. So we're constantly discussing students with you. How are they doing? Who's ready to step down and who's in the queue? Who are you thinking of to bring into ESS? We're doing that all year long. I'll talk to you about the meetings that we have briefly. Where we're discussing that with your team. The focus is weekly individual therapy. Want to make sure every week we're sitting and doing formal therapy with our students, the kind of therapy they would get if they were getting supported outside of the district. Many of our students are in our partner districts and we encourage that relationship to continue. What we'll do is collaborate with those community providers in that case. So we're doing support in the school. They're getting support in the community if, if they are. And that's even double, obviously, and more impactful. But even if students are not, we want to get them in the school building, have an opportunity to sit with them regularly and also respond in real time. If the students are not with us in session and are having a need, need to talk, need to express something, need to cool down, they're decompensating in one way or another, we want to be able to respond to those students in real time as well. We call those ad needed, as needed sessions. Okay, also the family, we think it's crucial, even at tier two, to have the families involved, engaged, committed to this process and from our first interactions with the family and what we call the brief clinical interview, assessing the students who are referred to the program, we get consents from the family. And we deliver that message, we need you involved for this to be effective. Do we still have families who resist? Of course, even after signing a consent, but that's what we're there to do. We double our efforts to get them engaged. And we really do have a high participation rate for our families. They do appreciate the district bringing ESS in so that no one's asking them to pay out of pocket or use their insurance, find providers in the community. All of that is right there in the district, right there in the school buildings. Participation is high. We will stay in the evenings. This is another factor that contributes to a high participation rate. Our clinicians stay one evening per week for those families who can't or sometimes won't come during the day. Say, we'll see you this evening. We'll see you Wednesday evening, what have you. We're also providing our families with a psychoeducation newsletter. We call it solutions every month. Some important topic in adolescent mental health. Nothing highbrow, just a review of the literature of the topic and then bullet points. Actionable steps. How do I use this with my student tomorrow in the home? And that's much appreciated as well. I mentioned how we can split the clinicians up between two buildings, each clinician, if you chose to do that, and we'd work with you on creating the best model. And then of course, continuing to do professional development and I'm going to talk to you as well about quality and risk management. Another really unique factor with ESS, a unique feature of what we're doing and I'll tell you what that's all about. Also at tier two, some built-in flexibility. You see, we call this the therapeutic flex support architecture. I mentioned Hamilton schools. They continue to expand each year with us. We started with them in twenty sixteen and just their two high schools. I believe we're now in six of their schools, but we're covering in one way or another, all of them. And when I say one way or another, they've asked us to adapt our tier two. We have an opportunity with our tier two clinician as a licensed mental health professional in your buildings to have that clinician do other things besides direct support for the students enrolled in the program. So some of our districts have said, listen, we, we need some tier two direct support, but we don't need that many students supported. Can we reduce the caseload? And then with that time saved for that clinician, have the clinician do other things. For example, a popular one is crisis intervention, crisis assessment and referral. Districts have told us, we've got lots of students who are popping up in crisis. We need to get them assessed. We need to get them referred. We're typically sending them out for that to cover our bases. It would really be helpful if ESS can do an assessment and referral. Maybe the referral is to the ESS program. Maybe we're concerned about that student and we, we want to consider a psychiatric evaluation. We're licensed mental health professionals in the building. We can do that assessment as to whether or not a student is a danger to himself or herself or others. If we think that student needs a psychiatric evaluation and formal clearance, we will recommend that always in full communication with building leadership and district leadership. So many of our partner districts who have tier two programs have incorporated that element into it as well, just one of the options. And there's flexibility built in there as you have other ideas for how our clinicians can be helpful to you. Briefly about the team. If Princeton Public Schools does decide to work with ESS and to have two clinicians, it will be a four-person team. The clinicians will be in the buildings full-time becoming part of the fabric of your school. That's our goal. We don't want to be thought of as ESS. Eventually, we want to be thought of as part of the district, part of your teams. They're going to be doing the caseload. One of the clinicians would take a leadership role, but they're both carrying the caseload. These are licensed professionals coming from psychiatric settings, not the school world. Again, bringing those two worlds together so that they're coming from intensive outpatient and residential treatment, et cetera. And then we're giving them further training. We call it ESS school. They need to learn our protocols. The protocols that we know drive success of the programs, for example, school avoidance. How do you work with students who are struggling with that? How do you work with students who are seeing more and more anxiety in their homes and are experiencing more and more of it themselves? What's the approach, et cetera? So our clinicians learn that before they start and then we're supporting them with the third member of the team. The district's main liaison to ESS will be a regional clinical director. And that person will be providing not only the programmatic supervision, but the clinical supervision for our staff as well. So even if these are clinicians who, based on their field, for example, social work, most of our clinicians are licensed clinical social workers, are no longer mandated to get clinical supervision. We mandated as an organization, we want you to be reassured that there are multiple sets of clinical eyes on these students and their families. We want you to be reassured that there are multiple sets of clinical eyes on these students and their families to support them. We also want to make sure we're supporting our clinicians in every way that we can. So we have that regional. The district would be if we were to work together familiar with the assigned regional clinical director, her name is Melissa Cowan. She is a veteran at ESS and has been with the organization from its beginning. So that's an added feature if we were able to work together. The fourth person on the team. With the two clinician staff. Is the quality and risk management specialist, that person is remote, doing two things. We're going to be keeping an electronic health record like you'd find in any psychiatric setting. On all of the students participating. It is a FERPA record, so the district would own that and the families are made aware of that from the very beginning, we also practice, of course. The highest level of confidentiality and best practices with that record, but it's a FERPA record. We're doing two things there with our QRM specialist, one, are there any red flags? This is yet another licensed mental health professional on the job looking at these students, so that's four in this scenario. Are there ways we can get more creative in supporting them? The other thing we're doing with that file, all the clinical interventions are logged, so we're going to have our QRM specialist scrutinize the work of our clinicians. And their clinicians know this from the first interview, not only are we going to be supporting them. Fully, but we're going to be watching them very closely with the work that they're doing and this is one of the ways that we do that. The other thing that the QRM specialist does is, and this is another unique feature of what ESS is bringing. Create what we call the ESS report card. That's going to be objective data. On the impact of this program on the students enrolled. How is it impacting their grades, their attendance, their discipline? How many sessions have we done? How much time has it saved your team if we've done PRN or crisis interventions? We're getting qualitative feedback from the students themselves, from families. Is this program effective, is it helping for families and parents, is your privacy being respected? Are the ESS clinicians making themselves accessible to you and we want to give especially the Board of Education, all of that feedback with a quarterly report card. So we're doing that as well. The professional development. I mentioned the ESS PD library that you'd be choosing from straightforward content based workshops, one hour, two hours delivered throughout the year. District wide. Not necessarily just the schools that we're in, here are some of the more popular topics, but there are over fifty at this point. And I just wanted to touch on, one of the things that we mentioned. In our RFP response, because it has become so popular. Is the. Expansion of professional development. So not just the content based workshops that come standard with any clinical model. But many of our partners have asked us to go deeper specifically on the trauma piece, that's been the operative word. Work with a smaller group of teachers, whether it's five, ten, fifteen. And take a deeper dive into what we call our trauma attuned model. That's giving these teachers, teacher leaders. More insight into the impact of trauma on learning, on behavior. Also more skills around creating nonreactive environments in their classroom. It's an opportunity for the district to have a select group of teachers become mentors to other teachers. In the district going forward, creating a legacy there, there's side by side classroom observation. There's a measurement of progress, nothing evaluative or punitive, of course, it's just a measure of progress, et cetera. So many districts have done that and of course Princeton Public Schools would have that option. Another piece that I'll also touch on are virtual mental health workshops. This has really become super popular over the past two years. Because it's been easier for families in the community, not ESS families, they're welcome too, but they're going to be getting lots of support. This is the whole community. And that's doing professional development style workshops, but geared towards the home. And we invite community members to join, many of our partner districts have this recorded and they'll put it on their website, so. Families feel like they don't even want to have one of these Brady Bunch boxes or their names up. On a presentation, they can just review the recording. So PD style, including self care. What we call caring for the caregiver, maybe our most important, most. Popular topic amongst community members over this past year. Most demanded. So that's the professional development piece, again, there's a lot to it, but I just wanted to make sure I covered a little bit of that with you. And then the final piece here. How do we make sure that we are collaborating and communicating with school leaders, district leadership? The centerpiece of that is the weekly administrative meeting, it's like rounds, medical rounds. I usually liken it to rounds because everybody knows what that's about, we're going to have our regional clinical director facilitate the meeting with our clinicians. And your child study team members, we love to have the principals there if they have time, vice principal. We want to discuss all of our students, not only clinically but academically. So we're on the same page, taking advantage of the knowledge you already have of these students. Giving our points of view, getting yours, et cetera. It's also a way for for our two teams to become one. With the relationships being built in those meetings. That's a crucial meeting, we do it every week. We usually piggyback on a meeting that already exists because we know teachers and administrators are very busy. So so that meeting is crucial, we'll meet with the principal once a month, that's bird's eye view. Give us twenty minutes, give us a half hour, how are we doing? Anything you think we need to tweak? We have it written into your contract. If you're unhappy with the clinician, we will replace that clinician. We're really confident doing that because of the thorough job we do of vetting these clinicians before they ever start in your district. But that's written into your contract, so they're not in the principal's meeting, we're asking the principal, how are they doing? Are they making themselves accessible, are they ingratiating themselves, becoming part of the school community, et cetera? We meet with the director frequently, the director's invited to all of these meetings, superintendents. When this report card comes out, Dr. Kelly, we're often sitting with superintendents to go over the numbers. The qualitative and the objective data and that feedback. And of course, presentations to the board. We're often asked, our clinical team, the regional, the full time staff. The board is having a meeting in a couple of weeks, they want to see an update, can you put together a PowerPoint to present to them? And we're happy to do that, we do that frequently. Okay, so conscious of your time, looking at the clock. These are the high points of what we think really makes ESS unique. The structured program that has been streamlined, reinforced over the past thirteen years, a focus on family. The use of objective data. The particular clinicians that we're bringing always licensed. You're never going to have a clinician cutting their teeth at Princeton Public Schools, they're experienced and they're going to be supported by an experienced team and then that collaboration piece that I mentioned. We want to become one team in the district. So. I appreciate your time, if there is time and you'd like me to answer questions, I'm happy to do that, you let me know. I'll stop this share. I appreciate everybody's attention.
Um, so thank you, thank you very much Jared, we appreciate the presentation and I guess if we could just back up a little bit first. And if perhaps Dr. Chu or Dana can can share with us. Why is this being brought to the board? What's the need? How many kids will be served by this and if we could just get a broader overview, please?
Yes, I can, I can go ahead and share, so. Right now with tier two supports, we're generally addressing about twenty students per week. At the high school level, slightly lower number at the middle school level, probably around twelve students per week. And the reason that we're bringing this forward is really due to the fact that we really need this high level of support. That's continuous throughout the year, that's layered with the parental involvement components. Supports to our staff so that we can also begin to build our internal acumen in this area. To continue to to support our students in a tier three approach.
And and this can't be handled by our current staff?
We currently don't have people that are designated specifically as just clinicians. Obviously, our child study team members are engaged in being case managers, I E Ps. Our school counselors have a three tiered approach with academic, college career and social and emotional wellbeing. So whereas you know, these clinicians would be specifically there to deal exclusively with the with that one set of issues.
And I guess ultimately, how many, how many students, I understood two clinicians, fifteen. Students per clinician, so thirty, but a six weeks program, so. Would it, you know, how many kids would that be during the course of a school year, do we think?
Probably around seventy five plus students, if my math is correct, around seventy five students per building throughout the year.
Okay, alright.
I think in terms of direct services, but in terms of indirect through parent workshops. Most primarily through professional learning for the staff. So it does seem indirectly that they would have an impact on tier one supports as well.
And and I guess why are we seeing this need, like I know that you don't have a crystal ball, but what, why is there this need?
Would you like?
I think, I think Jared, I was gonna say Jared kind of touched a little bit on it in his.
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to jump in on that one, although I used the term happy loosely, this we've again. It can be a long, long discussion. Daphna, about why there's been an uptick even before the pandemic. Breakdown of the family unit, social media. Pressures that the students that we've never seen before, certainly I hadn't coming up. Coupled with all of the challenges that adolescents in particular already face. And then what compounds it all is this pandemic. We keep getting data, further and further data. From the government, from. Journal of American Medical Association, from the APA. About the impact of isolation. What the school closures have done with these young minds, K through twelve. And how in particular it's led to more anxiety. A what we have been calling an ambient anxiety, just kind of hanging in the air about what's happening next, waiting for the other shoe to drop. So I'm going on and on here, those are the factors that come up the most. When I have these discussions, not only with clinical folks, but with our partner districts.
Okay, thank you. Jean?
Oh, thanks so much for the presentation, I have a couple of questions. What about our students whose primary language or their primary language at home is not English? Are you able to serve them? Also, what happens over the summer? When school is not in session, is it possible to get your services à la carte, in other words, not the four professionals all at once? And if a student falls outside of selected services that our district has identified, what happens then? And are you relying on our staff to refer students to you? And I can repeat those if you need me to.
Yeah, I'm riding furiously as you're asking, thank you, Jean. Let's talk about the language. So yes, once we get a green light. From a partner district. That's when we start recruiting aggressively, best fit clinicians. And so we're asking all about and these kind of, some of these conversations have happened already. Some of your colleagues have asked them. We're starting, we're asking about bilingual, we're asking which languages are necessary. We've provided Spanish speaking, Portuguese, Creole. These are some of the questions that we'll be asking for sure. And other factors, what you think would make for a best fit, so it's really coming from the district and school leaders and that's who we're looking to recruit. If there is a challenge with students, mostly the challenges are not with the students themselves, but more so with families. And so we do our level best, one example is, I mentioned the newsletter. That we provide called solutions to families, we can provide that in any language that you need. When we've had a challenge where we've we've not, just to speak candidly, we've not had a clinician in place. Who speaks the exact language, then we're very often working with, not in the therapy itself, again. For the most part, our students were able to communicate with. It is families. So we'll have whoever in the district has been working with those families. Be involved, not in the therapy, but in the logistical components as well, but again, our priority will be defined a bilingual clinician. As needed for the district. You asked about, is that? Does that answer that part of the question?
That does, thank you.
Sure, E S Y, extended school year, summer school. So our extended school year program is a maintenance program, you don't make, you don't, you don't make much progress over the summer, but you don't want to lose any ground and I'm guessing that's what you have in mind, so we do provide a summer program. What we do. Again, so that you're all familiar with even the specifics of the partnership. Our clinician, these are year to year contracts. And our clinicians don't know if they have a job the following year until the contract is renewed. So we have a separate fee for E S Y, but what we do with our partner districts is say, if the contract is resigned, is signed again for the following year. By April fifteenth, the summer program is free. And that's what our partner districts have done year in and year out. So the answer is yes, and it would be at no cost if we had the contract signed by April fifteenth. Which we anticipate is plenty of time, but we'll have time to discuss that. You also mentioned à la carte. So yes, we have worked with some districts just doing professional development to start. As an example of smaller, so to speak, models. Professional development only, whether it's just out of that library or going a little bigger than that, doing the coaching. Only, a little bigger than that is just one clinician. What we call a singleton. And so some, some partners have started on that level. Based on our conversations, we recommended two clinicians. You know, I have these conversations, you won't be surprised to hear day in and day out. We could use twenty clinicians, but we have budget to work with here, let's see what makes the most sense. Based on our needs, vis a vis the budget, how can we make this work, so. At this point, our suggestion was to, but we're open. To your, to your thoughts going forward. And then if a student, and if those other questions were answered adequately, Jean, and then, and if a student, if I'm understanding you correctly. If. A student is referred. Or we're assessing a student and they actually. Fall outside of the realm of the ESS supports. So yes, a higher level of care, then we're working to collaborate, consult. With the district on what we think is necessary for that student. So you'll have licensed mental health professionals in the district. Collaborating with you, consulting, recommending. As opposed to having to send that student out for those recommendations, which we all know can be quite a challenge sometimes. If the student we feel in our, in our assessment does not rise to the level of ESS just yet. Then we're going to communicate that to the team and make suggestions, say, listen, you've got. We've come to understand and rely on. This particular program or approach to supporting students, we've become familiar with the staff in the district and the school providing it. Let's see if we can't have this student supported in that way with these little tweaks before we admit them into ESS. We're having those conversations all the time as well and it's collaborative. So if that answers the final part.
It does, and you rely strictly on our staff to refer.
Yes, we have that process streamlined, again, as a former teacher, if I knew ESS was in the building, I would have referred half of my class easily. We don't want that flood of referrals, so we've streamlined this, we have a designated gatekeeper or gatekeepers in each building. Often the principal wants to do that or the vice principal to make sure they're on top of things to begin with, maybe they delegate as the year progresses. But they will receive referrals from child study team or guidance. Because remember, this program is open to whether or not a student is classified, classified gen ed. We'll get those referrals there, the goal here is to have this student go through your MTSS already. And then if it's not working, come to the ESS program. That's standard, so if it's not working, fill out this referral. Send it to the gatekeeper or gatekeepers in the district, the gatekeeper will say, yep, we think this student is a good candidate for ESS, let's talk about this student in our Thursday administrative meeting. Or actually, that that gatekeeper has become familiar enough with an ESS student profile that. That the gatekeeper says, no, I don't think so, not yet, let's consult with ESS about what else we can do. Let's consult with E S S about what else we can do before we, so to speak, take up that slot in the program.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah.
Rob?
I just have one question. I won't ask as many questions as Jean. Just quickly, the, the six to eight week sort of window, right? It's, it's, it sounds, I don't know, rigid probably is the wrong word, but knowing the fluidity of mental health situations and, and mental health crises, what, what happens afterwards? Because I, I mean, I, I, I'd give you guys a whole lot of kudos if after six to eight weeks, you could say, and ninety-five percent of the cases, everybody's better, right? Like, what, what's next?
Yes, and, and thank you for that question. Gives me an opportunity to speak to that, and I'm sure others were thinking about it. The six to eight weeks we have come up with, based on our experience thus far, six to eight weeks, I don't know if I'd say ninety-five percent, but I'd say typically does the trick. We're constantly assessing if a student needs more support. At the end of those six to eight weeks, that student will get more support. We have found that if after ten, twelve weeks, the student still needs, we're still concerned about that student and, and they still need interventions, then we might be recommending a higher level of care. That happens, for sure. But it is true that we've come up with six to eight weeks because we've seen that be effective with, with these students with mild to moderate needs, as opposed to the, the, the students with the highest level of need. So it's, it's typically effective. Do we see students for whom six to eight weeks does not do the trick? Absolutely. And then we're sticking with those students, communicating in the administrative meetings about what's happening. So not only students who are ready to step down, but students who are continuing to struggle. Want to keep that on everybody's radar and then make decisions going forward about how to best support those students with safety in mind first.
Thanks, Jared.
Sure.
Beth?
This is one, just first to start with Dana. I'm wondering, just you, you mentioned in terms of numbers of what we're looking at right now. You said that maybe there's about twenty a week at P H S and twelve a week at P M S that need the tier-two interventions or tier-two type supports. How many per week are we having or seeing that are tier-three that we're actually having to refer out?
Yeah, earlier in the year, we were probably seeing at least three to four a week. I don't know if Mickey's still on the call. I know we've been seeing an, an uptick throughout the months of May and now going into the month of June of the number of students that were being put out on, you know, in pay intensive outpatient or inpatient programs in the community. I, I believe if I'm correct, if Mickey's not here, I believe she told me that we did have three of those last week.
And that's at the high school?
That was in total, I, I believe that included all, all levels.
But, and you guys have seen.
There's still an alarming amount of students to be going out at any one week or time within, in, in a district of our size.
So that's nothing like what was happening before the pandemic. I mean, if you compare the numbers, you're seeing, you're seeing an increasing number of kids that are needing these supports and.
Oh, I am absolutely, even though I wasn't in this district, you know, prior to the pandemic, the number of students that are coming, sharing these really intensive situations that are occurring, you know, with them personally and emotionally and socially is much higher than it's been.
And, and when we say, you know, we've got twenty a week at P H S alone that need tier-two, I mean, how are we supporting them? Because I know that I've heard, I mean, anecdotally, that in the community there aren't, I mean, people are having to wait, they're waiting lists. There's not enough providers to provide this kind of care. So do we see, I mean, the tier-two kids in our school, are they seeing people? Or are they just having to take a number?
Yeah, so, yeah, they are seeing people. We, we obviously currently are working with two different community groups. We also have our one SAC counselor who's running groups. The child study team members, we have some of them running groups, the school counselors are running groups. And it really does all feed into this idea of our multi-tiered systems of supports that we're looking to build within the district, which we have really begun starting that work. And actually, on Friday, we'll be doing some really important work with the I N R S teams, which would be a tier-one intervention.
But you're, it sounds like you're saying you're having, you're having trouble keeping up with the, the numbers. It's just sounding like growing and growing. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on the board? So can I ask, Dr. Two, I guess, what's the next step here for the board?
That's a great question. So Betsy reached out and sort of asked about, like, this year versus next year, et cetera. So what Dr. Kelly is asking tonight is that we pilot the, the tier-two services for the school year for next year. And that, you know, Dana would work really closely with E S S, myself, Dr. Kelly, I'm sure Mickey as well, to identify the program. As they said, there's check-ins with admin along the way and built-in structures and support so that they can see, and that you'll get those report cards. And then we would schedule time during SAC meetings to sort of do some of those periodic, maybe quarterly check-ins throughout the school year and talk about next steps, how many kids we're servicing, how are their attendance rates, you know, what services they're receiving, et cetera. Obviously, all confidential, no names being used, but mainly numbers and the program. And then Dana can report out, you know, how are we then aligning services within our existing counseling department and offloading some of those other things so that they can do the other important work that they need to do as well?
Okay, thank you. So am I correct that no board action is required tonight? And that this will be discussing it again in July?
In July, thank you, I should have said that, yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right, well, thank you very much, Jared and Dana, for that presentation. We appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you in July. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Okay, have a good night. We're now going to move on to the first of our, oh, Dr. Kelly, did you have anything else before we move on?
No, I, I would like to say thank you to the board and to the community, and especially our staff and students, since this is our last official board meeting for the school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kelly. And with that, we'll move on to our first of two public forums, public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. And I'll just ask that you please be respectful. We might have a lot of people who want to comment. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. And again, you have a timer on your phone, please time yourself. And I'm not going to cut you off at three minutes, but please wrap it up so that we can hear from as many people as possible. Please keep your comments respectful, and we are not able to talk about or comment in any way on any personnel matters. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bolden to begin the public comment.
Rachel Winfrey.
Hi, my name is Rachel Winfrey and two children in Princeton schools. I just wanted to comment that Dr. Kelly and the B O E are making big changes to Princeton Public Schools right now in ways that are going to greatly impact our kids' educations. And many of us in the community are feeling frustrated by the lack of access to Dr. Kelly and the B O E, and specifically with your refusal to answer our questions. So our only opportunity to have input on the decisions you're making for us is by attending these webinars where Dr. Kelly and the B O E decide who gets to speak. And thank you for calling on me. Speakers can't see each other, and Dr. Kelly and the B O E explicitly refuse to answer questions. So this way of interacting with stakeholders has an undemocratic feel in it. It gives an impression of a real lack of transparency and accountability. So I would just like to respectfully request that Dr. Kelly and the B O E make themselves available before the end of the school term in an open, live question and answer format so that parents and other stakeholders can have our questions answered. I also request that you publicly post the date, time, and Zoom link for this live session on the B O E meeting website well in advance so that parents can know what is happening. And I realize that right now, the situation we're in explicitly is not a question and answer. But could either Dr. Kelly or the B O E please just answer with one word here, whether you will honor this request from parents or not? So just say yes or no. Thank you.
Rita Rafalovsky.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much for, for that presentation earlier. It's interesting, I, I joined for other reasons, but I'm glad I was, I was able to attend this particular session. I wasn't expecting it. The thing is, my mom is a clinical social worker and has been for the last thirty years. And I just, I know from, you know, speaking with her, you know, since she, you know, this is her career now, she's been doing this, as I mentioned, for thirty years. So she always has, where she works, she always has a psychiatrist who oversees the social workers. And sometimes there are psychologists as well. And I was just wondering, you know, in this, in this model, because I, I just looked at the website for the E S S website, and I, and I noticed that in the leadership, there are no medical doctors, and there is only one licensed psychologist. And I, I wanted to understand, because I take mental health very seriously. My, my aunt is a psychiatrist, and I wanted to make sure that there is, you know, proper oversight of the social workers as well. And I, I do, I absolutely value, you know, the, you know, the work that the social workers bring to the table, you know, because I, I, you know, my mom does a lot of great work, but there is more than just social work in mental health. And, you know, everybody plays like different roles in the process. So I, I didn't see how the function of, you know, the, the, the doctor would play into the fact and, and the psychologist. So that, to me, is a little confusing, and I think we need to maybe dive into that a little bit deeper. The other question I had is, who is accountable for something going wrong? So if, you know, if we did have a situation, you know, how would we deal with that? What does that mean? What happens when a situation like that arises? And also a question of how success will be measured and who will be measuring the success and how it will be reported. So I know that it seems like we're just starting, you know, the journey, and there will be more discussion on this topic. So I just wanted to highlight these, these areas. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Rita, and I would encourage you to reach out to Dana Karas or to Dr. Two, and they can tell you, they can provide some more insight into how this kind of service works in a school system, right? Because the school's district is a totally, totally different entity than, you know, other, other entities, and we have different requirements. But I, but I think that, that you should speak with Dana or Dr. Two, and they'll be able to, to, to share some information with you on how things are structured here.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Linda Don?
Yes, thank you so much. I realized it was the last meeting of the year. So I wanted to thank the board and especially thank Dr. Kelly. I think I started the year with a lot of concern about the COVID precautions and the return to school for the children who had been on remote for a year. So I wanted to thank Dr. Kelly for all of the work that she did to help all of the parents that I was in touch with. Now, I admire the group of parents that I was working with through the year. There were a few rumors. We made sure we got our facts straight. We always asked questions and got our questions answered. And we had so many opportunities to talk with the board and Dr. Kelly about ways to improve the situation during the year. And one of the things that Dr. Kelly said at the beginning of the year was, we are going to follow the science, and I appreciate it so much. And just, you know, as one mom, I just want to thank you for shepherding the outdoor lunch program, which few districts in the area were doing. My son was able to eat outside every day this year as a high-risk child. I just personally, from my heart, want to say thank you and thank everyone on the board for working with parents in such a productive way. I think we avoided afro mooney, and we really worked all together to get something done that was important this year. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Jill North?
Hi, yes, thanks. My name is Jill North. I just wanted to ask about the claim I heard tonight that releasing the redacted math report from Dr. Milo had been a mistake and a suggestion I thought I heard you make, that you had all recognized it as such at the last board meeting. I'm a little confused by that because, well, I was the one who had asked about the redactions at that meeting. And at that meeting, you all offered reasons for them, based on legal advice. You had sought out and received reasons based on teacher privacy and some other legal reason that I can't follow because I'm not a lawyer. And at the end of this discussion, you even said that you would go back to legal to get more appropriate redactions. So it just doesn't seem like the redacted report could have been a mistake. Also, on the Q and A that you posted about the changes to the math program, there were reasons listed there for the redactions. It said, in order to protect the privacy of teacher names that were mentioned in the report. But now, strangely, the Q and A seems to have been removed from the website at the same time that you're planning to release the full unredacted report. So I'm wondering, is this because there were inconsistencies between the answers posted on the Q and A and the full content of the Milo report? Or is there some other reason that the Q and A was taken down just when the Milo report, the full Milo report is being released in full? I'd like to know, thank you.
Thank you. Charles Su?
Hi, this is Joanna Shu. I, I have a, a daughter in Princeton High School currently in the tenth grade, and she is part of Mr. Eastburn and the Science Research Program. Earlier, you heard how all of the, you know, presentations from students graduating from that program or the student, current students that are still in the program, and, and how wonderful this program has challenged their minds and given the opportunity to learn so much more than, than what a typical class can provide. And I just wanted to provide a plea to the Board of Education to consider funding this program, to provide enough funding, right? And I mean, what I'm hearing from my child is that there is not enough funding, and therefore that, you know, we either have to, either the students or the, or the teachers have to pay out of the pocket to fund the programs. And, and I just think that, you know, given the fact that there is so much money already pay out to hire outside consultants for, you know, various types of activities. You know, for instance, the, the equity program that costs three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you know, that's, maybe we can look at what is really impactful for the students and, and fund these type of more, you know, impactful programs appropriately. And that's just something that I want to, you know, bring up to the board and hope the board will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Rosenthal?
Hi, I just, I wanted to add my voice to the conversation tonight in support of Dr. Kelly and the board's efforts to address some of the ongoing challenges that our district has faced in providing all of its students with the individualized support they need to be successful. I think many of us can agree that we're really fortunate in this district to benefit from incredible programs like the Science Research Program that propel our students to new levels of success. And given that, keeping an eye on some of the students who need more in order to also be able to get to a place where they can pursue their aspirations. So as a new leader to our district, I look forward to seeing how some of your initial actions will bear fruit, once given the benefit of time.
Thank you. There are no other questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. And so with that, we'll move on to item.
There is one, one person.
There always is, I go too quickly.
Mr. Ponder.
Okay.
I apologize for the late jump in. Hi, I'm Ronald Ponder, co-president of the Princeton Parents for Black Children, a parent of a freshman and husband of a board member. On behalf of the P P B C, I want to be clear that we are in full support of Dr. Kelly and her efforts to solve a variety of problems which show that blacks, Latinos, special needs, and many others are being denied access to benefits of a P P S district education. I also want to express my concern that while I am accustomed to attacks against equity, what rankles me the most and scares some black parents is that we are now faced what rankles me the most and scares some black parents is that we are now faced with a small group of parents who want to protect their precocious children, that's their words, against equity by dressing their arguments in a pro-equity disguise. They are being disingenuous and opaque. They lack the transparency that they claim others lack. First, I have been here for 20 years and I have never seen any of the signatories of that hateful hit job disguised as an objective report involved in equity and student achievement efforts or meetings, at least not until they were ready to disrupt some actual progress. Second, they clearly know nothing about the problems which equity is to resolve as they code their words and play games with definitions, as opposed to coming up with solutions to problems like the negative effects of tracking, the use of I E Ps based on behavior and inequitable disciplinary practices. I attended their meeting where they claimed that they don't promote anti-racism, but someone continued to promote the racially troubling idea that Asians are a model minority, which is harmful to most Asians, which is a broad category. And they suggested that their people worked hard and implied blacks and Latinos did not. And the authors of the report, the leaders of that meeting, said nothing to criticize the message in the racist tones. I attended a meeting where they did not allow taxpayers who foot the bill for their children's education into the meeting. What they either failed to understand or afraid of is that anti-black, anti-equity sentiment does not reflect the values of this multicultural community, most of which is not here just to take advantage of the education. Finally, this small group is demanding meetings with the board and demanding that black leadership, especially the women, not be included in those meetings. That wasn't a demand just made now, but it has been made. Their behavior, and I want it to be clear, is anti-black. I have been receiving calls from black parents who want to know if they should take their kids out of this district because they feel unsafe. They are afraid about the national environment and this environment. So I say to them, don't worry. We nor our Asian, Latino, and white allies will allow this to diminish board support for equity without a fight. And we invite you and everyone that agrees with the need for equity to join us. I'm done.
Thank you.
Leo Nagreen. Probably butchered that.
Hi, I'm Lauren Yuan. Hi, I'm a parent of three children in the Princeton Public Schools. I live on Prospect Avenue. And I happen to be one of the signatories of that report that Mr. Ponder was referencing. So, I mean, I'm not even sure what to say to what he was saying. I think I basically have a question for the district, basically, which is that I would like to understand what happened with the math report and the Dr. Milo report in the math committee. Dr. Milo delivered a report back in May 2021. A math committee was formed in March 2022. Parents have been requesting this report since then, at least. A parent filed an open record act request a couple of weeks ago, finally got the report. It was heavily redacted. In the meantime, the district was accusing parents of spreading rumors. You know, misinformation. There was a Q and A up on the website. And this Q and A made a number of false and misleading statements and is no longer present, I guess. I'm confused about what happened here. I think Daphne mentioned earlier that it was a mistake made. I would just like to see some accounting of what happened. And I hope what I'm saying right now is not something that makes people in this community feel unsafe or they don't belong here. I really don't see the connection there. I, and yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to speak very slowly before I move on to the next item. Are there any more hands? We do have another. There is actually. Michael?
Hi, I'm one of the research students. I'm not one of the parents. But I don't know if I'm allowed to make a statement.
Yep.
I am, okay.
Yep.
From what I understand, which is fairly little, since I haven't been keeping up with the politics of this at all, it's that politics is pretty hard because almost everyone wants something different, you know? And I'm not anyone, any one particular standing to say that. I'm not a parent, I'm not a teacher, I'm not a, don't understand legal jargon. But what I do understand is that it's hard because everyone wants something different. And it's especially hard when you're in control of who gets what they want at any given time. And I, as one member of the research program, want funding for the research program. And I understand there are people here who wants other stuff. It's crazy because it's so, I can't imagine having to be in that position because it's so incredibly hard to decide that. And I would like to sort of say a word of kindness to the board and everyone of being able to make those decisions. And really, I can only assume trying to help everybody. Because, you know, that's sort of your job, which I can only assume is rather difficult. Again, I don't really have much of anything else to say than that. I just want to say thanks for your efforts to help everybody because I can only assume it's really difficult when everyone has a different complaint.
Well, thank you, Michael, and that was, that was very meaningful. So we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, moving on now to item I1, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Is that a consent item, Mr. Bolden? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the board business 2223. I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions. J1, bid and quote threshold authorization. J2 is an action item, professional services and E U S insurance brokers. Can I get a motion, please? Beth, second, Brian?
Sorry about that. Daphne Kendall?
Epstein.
Michelle Tuck Ponder? Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Robert Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Item J3, authorization to pay bills. J4, transfer of current year 2122 surplus to reserve. J5, annual statement of assurance, completion of school security drills. J6, annual chapter 47 resolution. J7, Omni Group third-party administrator for 3B retirement plans. J8, send-receive agreement, cranberry. J9, formal bids, contract renewals. J10, annual integrated pest management notice. J11, authorization to make transfers. J12, statement of assurance-led testing program. J13, appointment of other district officials. J14, appointment of treasurer of school monies. J15, petty cash. J16, authorization to procure goods and services through state contracts and consortiums. Mr. Bolden, do I need to abstain on that one?
No.
No, because it's a consortium? No? Oh, okay. J17, solicitation of bids. J18, designation of depository student activity funds. And J19, designation of depositories. Are we going to do a vote now? Are we going to put this all in the consent?
Those are all consent items, except the one which you called.
Okay, great, thank you. So now we're going to move on to item K1, board committee highlights. And we're going to start with Equity Committee with Chair Betsy Badle.
Thanks very much. I'm presenting for my co-chair Debbie Bronfeld tonight as well, who is away. I want to note, we have not met since our last May meeting. But a note to the public, we will be meeting on June 14th on the Valley Road Lawn at 4:30 for one hour with the members of the Equity Committee. If, we'll have five board members in attendance, as well as our administrative liaisons to the committee. Our meeting was supposed to be June 13th in the evening. That's conflicted with many year-end events. And so we've moved this meeting to the Valley Road Lawn in person. We look forward to meeting with parents, staff, students, committee, community members, whoever would like to join us. If it is raining, we will meet in the conference room at Valley Road with masks. But we invite you all June 14th at 4:30. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Moving on to long-term planning with Chair Beth Behrens.
Yeah, thank you. We met, the Long-Term Planning, Facilities Planning Committee met on May 26th at 4:30. We continued to review and get updates on future enrollment and looked at current enrollment. We continued to look at planning data that we're gathering internally and talking about which ones we might need to share with the municipality, depending on things that they're looking at for planning. We talked about how to engage staff to obtain data and input on critical long-term planning questions. And we do intend to meet again this month on the 23rd at 4:30. And at some point, we look forward to having our data in order and being able to open to the public where, when we have meaningful data to share. And we do plan to have, look at some demographer, looking, updating our demographics after the fall numbers in October. Because given the way that the pandemic has influenced enrollment, the numbers went a little crazy for a couple of years. And we're looking forward to having, coming to a place where we can actually make some meaningful projections again. We're still now looking at the ones we had from S L R two years ago. So our next meeting is June 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Moving on to operations with Co-Chairs Susan Cantor and Brian McDonald.
Hi, I'll give our report. We met May 31st at 1:30. We received a brief update from New Roads, our construction manager, as to the progress at P H S on the finishing the referendum projects there. We also received an update on the upcoming work this summer, which will begin on our roofs. And finally, as we do in every meeting, we discuss sustainability initiatives as the district begins to work on the ESIP to complete LED lighting and certain other projects. And we were presented with an opportunity that we'll begin to potentially look at opportunities in electric buses for the district. That's something that we are hoping that can move forward. So we will see what funding is available for us to pursue those initiatives. Our next meeting was open to the public. It's July 13th at 8:00 a.m. and we welcome all to attend.
Thank you, Susan. I'm moving on to personnel and I'm guessing Betsy Bagley is going to be delivering that report.
I am. It's a very brief report for Chair Debbie Bronfeld. We met Thursday, May 26th. We discussed staffing for the Technology Department. We discussed staffing of several open supervisory positions. We discussed new job descriptions and our next personnel committee will be in July on the 14th. That is unfortunately close to the public, but we'll update you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Moving on to policy with Co-Chairs Beth Behrens and Jean Durbin.
Thanks. Policy met on May 27th. We discussed very briefly the second read for policies, which is on the agenda this evening for our new transfer policy manual. We will next meet on July 15th at 8:15. And we'll continue to work on those policies that are in the parking lot to be refined and fine-tuned before we start the year next year.
Okay, thank you, Jean. And then, once again, Board Committee Report Student Achievement with Chair Betsy Badle.
Thank you. We did not meet since the last May meeting. But we are meeting tomorrow. And as a little advertisement to the public, it's open to the public at 11:30. The Zoom link is up. We will be hearing about Apex Learning, the Corner House Program, the partnership with P P S this year, a final report of after-school programs for the year, and a special education update with Mickey Christopher Lee before, there'll be public comment before we adjourn into closed session. And I just want to say a very heartfelt thank you to Kathy Foster for coming in. I cannot believe it has only been five months, but we, as Daphne said earlier, really appreciate all you've done for our district. And an equally heartfelt welcome to Dr. Kim Chu, who is still here after most of her first official meeting. We're glad she's here and we look forward to having both of them at the Student Achievement Meeting tomorrow. So we do invite the public to join us.
Okay, thank you very much, Betsy. So with that, I'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Item L1 is the second reading of the policies. And then I'm going to move on to personnel. So M1, resignations. M2, retirements. M3, appointments. And 4, leave of absence. And 5, personnel items. And I just have something to say. On the, unfortunately, on the agenda tonight is acknowledgement that we lost a staff member last week, and that was Robin Wilson, who was a bus driver. She had been an employee of Princeton Public School since 1999. She was 62 years old. And I asked her supervisor just to, just Donna Braden, to sum up a little paragraph about Robin and how special she was. And Donna said Robin was very punctual, never late to pick up her students or work. She had a smile all the time unless she was angry with you and you would know it. She never kept a grudge and she would always be the one that would apologize if she was wrong. She loved her music. I was listening to it and singing and sometimes dancing. Robin lives behind a son named Robert. Robin's family and her church and her work family were very important. And Robin had two positions, two jobs, one with us here at P P S as a school bus driver and one was a driving position at Access Link, which helped disabled people driving them to appointments. And she retired that from a few years ago. So the district extends its deepest condolences to Robin's family on her untimely passing. And we send them our best wishes. Okay, moving on, item M6, press certification. M7, revised appointments. M8, revision to unaffiliated reappointments. M9, substitute teacher student placements. M10, curriculum. M11, student services. M12, unaffiliated central administrator reappointments. M13, summer hiring. And 14, job descriptions. Moving on to N1, educational placement of students, 2122. And 2, Wilson Reading and Language Services. And 3, frontline technologies, I E P Direct. And 4, professional services, school physician, 2223. And 5, invo healthcare associate, physical therapy and occupational therapy, 2223. And 6, professional consulting services, 2223. And 7, home instruction provider. And these are all special education services for our students. Moving on to O1, financial reports. O2, fire and evacuation drills. O3, registration travel agenda. O4, change order authorizations, P H S renovation. Okay, no questions. And with that, we're going to move to item. I'm not sure, did this get changed, Mr. Bolden, the public comment?
Yes.
It did. So we're going to move to our second public comment. So again, please indicate what town you live in and please try to keep your comments brief and civil. Thank you.
Shell Bing Lee?
Hi, my name is Shell Bing Lee. I live in Province, Land and Road. For the personnel item. Sorry, let me take a look at the the new job description here. I saw that there are two new jobs created or change of scope. One is the elementary school curriculum team leaders. That is like overarching role of all elementary subjects. And the other one is the science supervisor that is for 6th to 12th grade. I wonder whether this is going to break the split science department into two. And what's the objective behind this architecture? Because it looks like we have another layer of admin leader for curriculum. I'm not sure whether this investment in admin is a good investment in terms of the P P S leadership. And again, thank you for a year come to the end and for all the efforts that board and the school administrator are putting into place. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That looks like it, Board President.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. We'll move on now to item Q1, which is the consent vote. Can I get a motion, please? Betsy, second. Mara? Mr. Bolden?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Robert Christopher?
Yes.
Central consent agenda passes.
Okay, well, I just want to thank everyone for, it was one of our longer meetings this year. But thank you for your attention and your commitment to our schools and our students. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Jean, second. Beth? On favor? Have a good night, everybody. Take care.